I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, back to open session. May I have a motion to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
We have a motion out of closed session. And that motion is to approve the superintendent's compensation plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. You need just a second, Mr. Drake.
That motion, I'm sorry, that motion requires more detail. I need to know the specifics of the...
I move that we approve the superintendent's compensation plan. You need...
You need...
You gotta say all that.
What, me? Oh, okay. So I should read step, all three steps?
Do you need that much detail?
Can I see the piece?
Yeah.
I mean, it's public information.
About my craft at Brooklyn Four and the rest of the...
Three bullets.
Okay. Who was the second on that motion?
Good.
I did.
Thank you so much. I did a general for the last piece, but tell me if you think this looks right to you. Oh, I made it private, so you can't see it. Hold on just a second. And it may come up as everybody not present at vote, but we can redo that. Nope, it just deleted the motion.
Will it show up on ours if we refresh?
It, it, I've got to redo it anyway. It's all right. If you'd, I apologize for the delay. Go give me just another second. I wasn't prepared. Time is nothing. And I'm sorry, Ms. Blackburn. I hope that this doesn't have to be done for me when you guys approve my evaluation.
I didn't see that.
Do you need to also include vacation days in there?
I believe that the leave dates will cover it without explicitly detailing those last two bullet items, but it indicates as, as she requested, and we have a copy of her request.
Right.
I think it would be just fine.
Okay, you're good? I'm good with it.
Do you want to?
I'll read that. I make a motion that we approve the superintendent's compensation request, including annual compensation of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents for the duration of the contract and payment of leave due dates as requested by the superintendent.
So, second.
All right, so we have a second. Roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you again for your patience.
No problem.
Thank you.
Our next item is honors, awards, and recognitions, and for that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I'm going to ask Dr. Staten if he'd come to the dais and take my position while we go and honor our recipients for this evening.
Okay, we will now begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. Dr. Lois Graham will come forward to speak about the four Montgomery County schools recognized by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Index of Performance Incentive Program.
I am excited to share tonight that we have four schools that are receiving academic awards this year from the Virginia Department of Education, which are the Virginia Index of, Index of Performance Incentive Program. If Micah Mafford, Principal of Margaret Beeks, would come forward first. Margaret Beeks Elementary School received a Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award for meeting all state and federal benchmarks while making progress towards the goals of the governor and the board. We are very pleased to present this award to Margaret Beeks Elementary School. Congratulations. We have three other schools that we're going to recognize together. For Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School, if Rhonda Baker would come forward. Harding Avenue Elementary School, Sam Clessenberry will come forward. And Kipps Elementary School, I believe Chris Woodrick had a last-minute emergency. Did he make it? All right. Good timing, Mr. Woodrick. Each of these schools were again recognized with the Board of Education Excellence Awards. This award recognizes schools that have met all state and federal accountability benchmarks for at least two consecutive years and have made significant progress towards the goals for increased student achievement. This is the second consecutive year that all three schools have earned this distinction. Congratulations.
We will now take a five-minute break, so the other board members can congratulate the recipients.
Public address time. The Montgomery County Public Schools sets aside up to thirty minutes at each of our regularly scheduled work sessions and meetings for the public to address the board concern, on matters concerning education in Montgomery County. Each person will come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. There will be timers on the screen in front of you and on the screens to the side here, indicating as to when you have thirty seconds left and then when your time is up. Also, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. We have five people, I'm sorry, four people signed up right now. First up will be Dennis Smith.
Dennis Smith, forty-nine eleven McCloy Road, Blacksburg. I'm sorry, I got a cold. Now, speaking on behalf of my elementary age child with special needs, I'm his voice. I'm his advocate. As with many special needs children, they rely heavily on a routine. Disrupting this established routine would be challenging, to say the least. It often leads to changes in behavior. For instance, adjusting to the time change in the spring is particularly difficult as an hour of sleep is lost. The morning routine takes longer as he is not ready to wake up. It takes him considerably longer to acclimate to the new schedule. He has not yet developed self-help skills to get ready for the day. Having the sleep that he needs allows him to perform at the level that is expected. Another concern that I have is based, based on the change in school start times is related to safety. In three years, my child will be entering middle school. This child does not understand the danger of traffic on the road. He is incapable of boarding a bus without assistance from a parent. The proposed change in school start times would prevent a parent from being present in the morning to assist him in boarding the bus. This change will require my family's entire schedule to change and cause additional strain on each of us. I urge you to reconsider this change in school start times. The impact that it will have on special needs children and their families is significant. Now, again, the educational system with special needs child is hard enough. Why make it worse? There's a lot of other issues in the school system besides these start times. This may just be a Band-Aid that is going to fix, supposedly fix grades, but there's a lot of issues. I've talked to one of the board members about these issues. The school we're at at, right now, process four, we're going to have a new principal, and hopefully some things change. But when you have teachers walking around in the classroom drinking, or in the hallway drinking coffee, you have teachers having meetings during the day, and teachers aides in the classroom doing the teaching, that's a problem. It's hard on these kids. The last meeting I was at, there were some reading one-eighty teachers here, and the question was asked, how much time is spent with these kids? Ms. Woolsey asked this question, and there was no answer ever given. None. I got two kids that were in process four, one still is. We've never met the reading one-eighty teacher, ever. And my daughter was below level the whole time she was in school, and we never met her. There's some real issues in these schools. Some of these schools are good, as we seen tonight, but some of them, they need some help. And I would, I would, I would really encourage y'all to look at some, some of these schools and find out what is really going on in them. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Coltrane Monrich. Did I get it right? Finally.
I'm Coltrane Monrich. I live at three-two-three Newtown Road, Shawesville, Virginia. Thank you again, board members and Superintendent Blackburn, for listening to me to speak again on the new school start times, despite the fact that some of you do not wish for me to speak on this matter, but it is my constitutional right, especially when the issue is, is so unjust and lack of freedom. The injustice that you are doing to these families by tying their hands and forcing them to pay for aftercare when they once did not, putting small children in harm's way, and taking away the, the teens' freedom for working after-school jobs or doing more than one extracurricular activity. These are just small fractions of a lack of liberty and justice for the, for our community. I hope the new candidates understand the great injustice and freedom this proposed plan will cause the people of Montgomery County. And I urge them to do their research and to talk to the parents and the family members and the loved ones. Then you will see, the time change will not fix this issue that this was set for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Harley Stevers.
Hi, my name is Harley Stevers, and I live at nine-thirty-six Walton Road. I am a student at AES, now I am going to A, eh, AMS. I say no for the time change because I was told to try to keep my doctor's appointments after school. So if the time does change, I will currently miss a lot of school due to my doctor's appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the list of sign-ups is Lois Grisland.
Grisland.
Grisland?
Looks like I might have extra three minutes if they're, they're working that long. My name is Lois Crisman. I'm from Christiansburg. I am here on behalf of the kids. You got most high schools does not want this change, along with the little ones. The little ones needs their sleep as much as the high schools does. When the high schools, I know for a fact, lot of them goes to work after they get off. They pour a couple classes, and they get off, they got jobs. I wish y'all would reconsider this, because I am completely against it. Mr. Eyes, I don't know where you have the right to speak out and tell us to keep our mouths shut, and shouldn't come up here and face y'all over this stuff, because it is us that put you on, in that seat. And if you can't be for the people, you don't need to be on here. I'm sorry I feel that way, but I think you shouldn't spoke what you said. Ms. Blackburn, I am glad that you are leaving, but if you hadn't, we would probably replace you, because you don't have our kids' safety up. And I am apologizing again. I don't have blue. I left my job to come in here and speak to you all on this subject. The daughter I, just, the grand, little kid that just come up here and talk to y'all, her name is Harley Stevers. That's my granddaughter. When she was born, she was born with one kidney, eighty percent blockage, and the other one don't work. She's had two bad kidney infections, and she's under a lot of doctor's care. She even has one coming up from UBA, just specially for her. And y'all really need to consider, some of these kids, I mean, you got kids worse off than her. You got parents that works. Mr. Eyes, I'm talking. You got people that works, they have to be there to get their kids on the bus and stuff. I mean, y'all are really hurting this community, and if y'all can't be for us, and I don't know why the people in the areas that's voting for this dumb stuff, they're changing schedules, why they don't vote y'all, have a meeting and vote y'all, they can. I have fit this system one time and won. Believe it or not, I did win. And if anybody wants to know how to do it, I will personally give you my phone number. My phone number's five-four-zero-two-three-nine-two-six-six-nine, and I will gladly tell y'all how to fight this system. I mean, I know some of y'all were for it, and I applaud for y'all for that, but the ones against it, I think every one of y'all ought to step down and get lost. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have on, on the signup sheet. Are there any other members in the audience who would like to speak? If you would, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Dana Lacy, sixteen-thirty-five Sherwood Drive.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Dana Lacy. Good evening, board and madam supervisor. Tonight, I once again come before you. We're not here because we're trying to be difficult. We want things complicated. We're here because we're seriously concerned about the impact of this change. After the vote was made in April, I started doing extensive research on this subject. Many of us, in fact, have done hours upon hours of research in many different angles in order to be the most informed in our battle. We knew that we didn't have a chance to persuade you any other way. We've become quite educated in the pros and cons of school time changes, have studied bus routes and data from our own county, as what, as well as some from other areas. But we have been scorned, ignored, and insulted by those who believe that in order to disagree with you, we have to be irrational, ignorant, misinformed, or uneducated. I've never doubted your intelligence, education, or dedication to our system, but I've wondered why a bunch of educated and logical-thinking individuals can be so blind to their own research, their own data, and support an ideal with so many documented inconsistencies. I truly believe that you have underestimated what we know and what we are capable of. We have found the research that supports the later school times, but we have also found research to support our side, so based on that alone, I believe we have some more work to do. That just doesn't need to happen now. It can be pushed back and reconsidered further. When we get to the point where a decision is justified by saying change is difficult, some families will have to adjust, it just isn't the right choice. No major change is ever going to be a popular one, and I guarantee you that I do realize that change happens in life. But when it, that is the reaction you have to please for concern, when that is the level of empathy and compassion that you pour out to your constituents, and no level of logic or research on the subject can sway you, then that's just disturbing and sad. This change will not affect you. You won't have to live with the day-to-day struggles that result from this, and some of you have made this decision knowing you were stepping away. I just don't understand. Honestly, it'd be easier to accept this if you just said, "Because I wanted to," and went on with it, "because it is beyond research data and study surveys at this point, it is because I said so, and we can't compete with that. We can't logic our way out of it. We can't research our way out of it." So I'm just disappointed. This was a hasty decision, no question about it. Fairfax County, who also has the number one high school in the state and star system fifteen in the morning, has been researching a change for over three years, has had eight town hall meetings, so forty-seven stakeholder meetings, and is not flipping their elemen- elementary first. Seven months and very little communication with stakeholders, except the ones you deemed important. You picked and chose what research to acknowledge, and this is what we get, and it's just a shame. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to address the board? I'm sorry, you can't, you cannot, once you've had your time, you cannot request more time. I'm sorry. That would be out of order. I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am. You're out of order. I'm, I'm sorry, you're out of order. Okay, with that said, public address is now closed. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of consent items. If no board member has anything to pull from consent, then we will consider those items approved. All right, moving on to the personnel report. May I have a motion to accept the personnel report?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved.
May I? By your actions this evening, you've appointed Amanda Wadner as the new principal at Blacksburg Middle School. You have also approved the transfer of Megan Marshall from principal at Harding Elementary to assistant principal at Blacksburg High School. Congratulations to each of these administrators on their assumption of new assignments and opportunities. I think they both are taking this little break for an opportunity for a vacation before they change roles, and so they're not with us this evening. But again, we congratulate them.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackburn. Next item on the agenda is to pay the bills. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda is our financial summary report. May I have a motion to accept the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The financial summary report is approved. Our next item is superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements, and with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Our first item this evening is the No Child Left Behind Title Funding Application. Each year, school divisions in Virginia must submit an application or a plan describing ways in which federal title funding will be spent. Applications must focus on specific measurable objectives and supplement local and state funding for education. The plans are based on current allocations, and the total amounts may change when the official allocation information is received later in the summer. The board was presented with the plan's information on June second, and this evening, you're being asked to approve the plan as presented.
Is there a motion, board members?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get a second there? Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. You need discussion on that. Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it is approved.
Next item is the Montgomery County Public Schools Gifted Plan, which will serve us from two thousand thirteen through two thousand eighteen. The board saw the plan initially in, on March five, two thousand thirteen, and then you were provided with some revisions in July of two thousand and fourteen. The regulations governing educational services for gifted, gifted students requires that the school division have a comprehensive plan for the education of students that include the components that are listed in your agenda item. The VDOE conducted a technical review of our plan in October two thousand fourteen. They suggested revisions and commendations. The plan before you this evening reflects both the revisions and the commendations. You sought for information on June second, and it's being submitted this evening for your action to approve.
I have a motion to approve, board members?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are, is there any discussions or questions?
I had asked for some information.
Yes, you did, and we're not able to give you actual numbers yet. It'll be the fall, but we can speak in generalities, Diane, if you...
Chairman Lyons, school members, Mrs. Blackburn, and I apologize to the board. I was going to prepare a statement that was going to be part of the board meeting tonight, and I missed that deadline last Thursday. But what I can tell you is that the division is working on that data that's going to be, it goes to the state, state sends it back to us, and then that I'll be able to submit that to you in the fall. What I can assure you of is that I did do some work based on what the resource teachers had sent me from their last reports, and we do have students represented in all of our subgroups.
Okay, so, and the information in the file will have our percentages as...
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Appreciate that clarification.
Any other questions, board members? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the gifted plan is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item is the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year end close. The accounts payable invoices that we have received as of June ninth, two thousand and fifteen have been processed for your school board meeting this evening. Additional invoices received will need to be processed to close out this fiscal year in accordance with your policy three-dash-three-point-six payment and payroll procedures. The school board in the past has authorized the superintendent to review and approve the payment of the final June invoices and include a report of the invoices paid at the next scheduled school board meeting. We are requesting the board approve this action this evening to facilitate the two thousand fourteen-fifteen fiscal year closing.
I have a motion, board members?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Are we still looking like the amount that we were, that we've already been presented in weeks past with our carryovers? Does it look like the same amount's going to be, it's going to be around that same amount?
Yes, we'll have a little more information next Monday, but currently, we are continuing to look at somewhere between one-point-six and one-point-seven million dollars in carryover. Could be perhaps a little more than that, could be a little less. That's a ballpark number.
Okay. Anything else, board members? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The fiscal year end close is approved.
Next item is fiscal year fourteen-fifteen requests for categorical appropriations reclassification. Montgomery County Public Schools has a performance contract with PEPCO to improve energy efficiency at our schools through activities such as weather sealing, water conservation, lighting, retrofits, chiller replacements, and others. These measures help reduce our division's carbon footprint while also saving money on utility costs. The PEPCO project is funded through a quality school construction bonds for school energy efficiency improvement projects, which we have to pay each year. This year, the division will transfer three-hundred... This year, the division will transfer $347,700 from its operating budget to debt service as part of the payment for this project. This is actually the second annual payment on this project, and the request tonight is really a technical amendment to the budget, such as some of those we did during the regular budget development cycle, so that the money is budgeted where the expenditure takes place. So we're asking that you approve this this evening.
I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, categorical appropriation reclassification is approved.
So it's policy time again, and you've got a whole bunch of them before you this evening. The yearly policy revisions reflect actions from the state legislature and also any recommended staff revisions. They're presented this evening for information and will be brought back to you either at the next regular business meeting of the board or at the first meeting in August, if that's your next regular business meeting. We're happy to take questions at this time, and we've tried to make a point person for each of the policies. And if you have questions, well, I'll ask that person to come to the podium.
Is there a specific category, as I'm looking through here, that you're focusing on this year?
No.
Okay.
Mostly it's legislative changes that came.
I was wondering if we could have some clarification about the attendance one, just the background as to why the wording was changed and things.
Would you provide the policy number for us, Jennifer?
Seven, two, point three or something.
Okay, so everybody can follow along.
Seven, point two, point three.
There really were two driving factors for changing the attendance policy. One was the clarification that the Department of Education has given us in terms of clock hours and how it relates to awarding credit for students. And so we really wanted to make sure that our high school students weren't being double penalized. Right now, the way our policy currently reads, they have to meet an academic standard as well as an attendance standard, and the Department of Education's given us the leeway to have some flexibility. So that was one influence. And then the other, if you recall from our six-year plan, was implementing a PBIS system. And so we wanted to look at attendance as a tiered system of supports rather than a purely punitive measure, which the credit process in the policy as it's written now really is purely a punitive measure. And so we wanted to have ways and supports to deal with students who were having attendance issues, and this policy really limited the ways that we could interact with them. So we've worked as principals, and Sharon Zuckerwar has been facilitating that with us. We've been working, gosh, I think we've had about seven meetings now, to develop guidelines that really are a tiered level of support, so that students have the opportunity to take advantage of all the resources we have in the county, the student intervention coordinators and all those people, to make sure that we're really addressing the issues of what's causing truancy, because we all know that there are many reasons that students don't come to school, and it takes a lot of support. So we want to deal with those issues rather than penalizing students twice and trying to take away credits when that's the last thing that they need. We want to support our students so that they can earn credits. So those really were the two main reasons that we adjusted the policy.
So instead of having this like credit review process, now you have a attendance improvement plan?
Exactly. We have, we'll have a whole level of supports. If you remember, you all have seen the triangle that Sharon shows often, but we'll have things in place for everyone, and then if students have more serious issues, we'll address them. And we still have the options that we're currently exploring, you know, for very serious cases like a chance petition or involving court services, those options are all still there. But it doesn't make us mandatorily penalize students if they're able to perform in the classroom academically, because the way our policy is currently written, it doesn't matter if students are successful in the classroom, attendance can be a barrier for them.
So they won't lose the credit if they miss a certain number of days now?
Correct. They'll handle it in other ways. From a discipline perspective, from a support perspective, through our relationship with community services, the new student assistance program coordinators that we're bringing onboard will be a part of that. We'll be able to use the resources that we're getting through Project Aware. We've got a lot of resources that are coming onboard that we feel like are a much more appropriate way to deal with students who are struggling with attendance than penalizing them for credits, which we know as soon as students start to lose credit, the chances of them not graduating increase exponentially. Thank you.
So with the three check-ins and check-outs not equating to an absence any longer, is that, that's essentially a part of this policy as well, correct?
Correct.
And so just help me with, re-explain that, just help me with the thinking behind that again. I mean, that would, to me, suggest that you could have someone who just checks in or out as much as they want, especially high school students who, I know I took advantage of that freedom when I was in high school, so.
Yeah. I think that what we're trying to do, again, is just handle it in other ways. So instead of it becoming part of the credit review process for their grades, it becomes a discipline matter, and we deal with it like we would other tardy situations, you know, if they're, and we have a range of ways that we handle tardies, you know, from detentions to in-school suspensions or those kind of things. But handling it as a discipline issue, if that's what it is, or if we've got provisions, if it's medical issues or those kind of things. But again, trying to handle it separately than their grades, we want to try and keep those two things separate.
So what would be the discipline, or I guess, what will be the policy? Will three absences then equate to some kind of disciplinary action? Is that what we're saying?
Right, exactly. Tardies are already currently part of our student code of conduct.
Okay.
We're just trying to remove them from having academic consequences for students.
Got you. Thank you.
When will this be brought to us for action?
Either if we have a regular meeting in July, it'll come back then, and if not, it'll come back the first meeting in August, which is in plenty of time for us to implement it.
Okay, I have a question. The alcohol, are alcohol and drug policy or drug and alcohol testing? There was a change in our update that was sent out, and I think that anytime we make a change to a policy, it should be voted on by the board.
We did run it past Mr. King, and he said it's really a form that substantiates the employees' recognition of what's in the policy, but I'm going to ask Joe to come and speak to it because he had the direct conversation with Brad.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Yeah, that is correct. We checked with Brad King, our attorney, and according to him, we're not changing the policy, we're adding the form to allow us to implement the policy with the employees. So it's not a change in the policy at all. So it does not require board action in order to attach it to the, to the policy.
So our policy, because I thought what I was reading was our policy, our policy states that if you have an accident, you know, you're going to be drug screened and, you know, has all that information in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is?
It says you may be. It's not required. The only one that's required are bus drivers, if, whenever they're in an accident.
Okay, well, this says that, I understand that MCPS will require, not may. The piece that you're adding?
Yes, ma'am.
To this? So there's a difference between will and may?
Yes, ma'am.
Big time.
If it's the pleasure of the board for us to bring the policy back and put the word will in it, we're happy to do that. We looked at it both ways, and after the conversation with Mr. King, went with his recommendation, but we certainly can bring the policy back if you desire.
Ms. Franklin, what's your?
I believe if we're adding this, something that our employees are going to be signing is going to give to them, is, you're adding something to that policy. So I believe it should be in front of the board to be approved.
I'd like to hear from Mr. King.
I'll have him at the next meeting when you, when you review the policies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can be prepared to do either it's simply a one-word change in the policy, if that's the direction of the board.
Okay. And the one word was not what I was concerned about?
I wasn't negating the importance of the one word, but I'm just saying we will, it would be very easy for us on the spot to make the adjustment to the policy if directed by the board to do so. After you hear from Mr. King.
Any other questions about policy changes, board members? Hearing none? We will await for that to be an action item the next time we meet as our, on our regular scheduled meetings.
Okay, our next item is the exemption of new employees from part-time incentive eligibility. I know you'll recall that during the budget cycle, there were several discussions about the need to potentially revisit our part-time employee salary schedule in light of the addition of health benefits and the contribution that the board will now make to those benefits, along with the fact that there's still a part-time incentive that's kind of like a bonus on top of that salary. Tonight, I'm asking the board to approve a course of action to provide time to review and possibly modify the salary schedule for this group of employees. The board has previously reviewed this recommendation as an information item at your May 19, 2015 meeting. The first step in the process is to exempt new hires from eligibility for the part-time incentive in its current form. This recommendation has no impact on any current employee who is receiving the incentive bonus or who is in the pipeline to receive it after the completion of three years of service. The board will have the opportunity to revisit the salary schedule and/or replace the incentive with an adjusted salary schedule. Tonight, I'm requesting you approve the exemption of new employees in terms of eligibility for part-time incentive. When the carryover funds plan is developed for the board, I will include a line item recommending the wage and market study that will provide the data that you would need to make a long-term decision regarding this salary schedule. This is presented this evening for your potential action.
I move that we exempt part-time employees hired after July 1, 2015 from part-time incentive eligibility.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions, board members?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to exempt these employees, which means exactly what? Just so we're very clear.
It means that a new hire, July 1, after that, would not be eligible, and the paperwork that they do shows the salary schedule the way it is with no three-year eligibility for a part-time incentive, only new hires.
Okay, so anyone hired after July 1 or this year?
Mm-hmm.
Would not be eligible for the incentive? And it, you have to be employed three years before you're eligible for the incentive. So I'm not sure what we're doing, it's going to take us three years to?
Might only take you one year. It might take three years, depending on what the price tag is to fix the, to fix the problem or the direction that the board wants to go. My, my thought is that after you have data, that the board could decide to continue the part-time incentive just like you have it, or fold some or all of what the value of the part-time incentive would be into the salary schedule for these new hires. Bottom line, I'm trying to get you some data to make a decision without these newest employees having an expectation that there would be a part-time incentive at the end of three years. You could go back and make them retroactively eligible if that were the decision of the board. It just states up front that as of right this minute, there's no expectation that you would have a guaranteed part-time incentive after three years of work with Montgomery County Public Schools.
You know, I, I understand, you know, what you're saying and what we're trying to do, but I just have a real concern that, one, this, this will take a long time, you know, three years is, you know, it just seems like a very long time to try to work out a problem that shouldn't be that difficult, you know?
I think it just gives us the flexibility, Ms. Franklin. I think if, if we could make a decision to do something, to change something, once we have this study done, you know, I have no problem making it retroactive to those folks who get hired after July 1. I think it just gives us some, some flexibility as to what we could potentially do in terms of changing a policy. And it's not going to affect, I mean, it's not going to affect anyone who's already in the pipeline, so it just really gives us a three-year buffer to really decide. It may or may not take that much time.
So if the board decides, you know, because like I said, I was here, you know, before this went into place, and, and there were issues with being able to retain employees because of the pay. And I, I just get really, really nervous when we talk about we may or may not do the incentive, you know, I believe should be rolled into the salary, you know, and what that looks like, you know, to be able to retain and hire employees in these key positions.
And that's the goal of doing it, so that it will be part of their salary.
That's if the board decides to do that, right? There's that big if there, okay?
The other issue is that because of the fact that you've added a benefit package to the, this category of employees with about a $7,000, $8,000 value, what it's done is it has made some positions lose value in relationship to other positions in the salary schedule because of that added benefit. It's a very complex issue, and I'm really just trying to buy the board some time. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I would like for, I think we should track the ability to attract and, you know, also track any increase in turnover that we have while we're looking at it. I mean, the board could go back, any board meeting you want to, and if you had the votes to do so, you could put it right back in place just like it was.
Yeah, I think it gives us some time to, maybe we can change the policy altogether, whether we add the funds there permanently and just make it a part of the salary schedule, or maybe we just say, you don't have to be here for three years, we change it to two or something. You know, there's, I think it gives us some leeway to do some different things once we get the information.
And the other complicating factor is that the requirement to provide the health benefits could still go away. So, you know, it's a, like I said, it's a, it's a very complicated issue, and you have budgeted to, to provide that benefit for all of the part-time incentive folks who work 30 hours.
Well, the only way that I would agree to this is, one, is retroactive, and, two, is that there is a time limit put on this. Three years is just open-ended, that's just to me. You know, we should be able to handle this within a maximum of a year.
Well, the study, if, as long as we're able to budget for it, as we are hoping to after we get our carryover funds approved and situated, the study would take how long, would you say?
It depends. Joe, you want to comment on that? But the plan would be to immediately put out an RFP to do that compensation study.
Yes, ma'am. Typically, they take somewhere between four to six months, depending on which company we, we, we go with?
Right.
And how comprehensive the study is.
So we could, we could essentially address this again during budget season next year?
Absolutely. If the, the board approves a compensation study or comprehensive study to be done sometime in the beginning of the school year, September, October timeframe, it could be done within six months. So you're looking at a February timeframe for it to be completed.
Comparable to the timeframe that we had with the Evergreen Study that we've been working on for the last two years.
I'm definitely in favor of putting some added pressure on our new superintendent as soon as they get here.
And I'm, I'm okay with putting it in the salary, because that was the idea of keeping the benefit, but for me, as far as the study goes, we know that that group needs that extra, so why do we have to have a study to tell us what we know is already needed? Those are the things I don't get. I mean, I don't understand why, I mean, to me, if you can look at what the incentive pay is, and that's how it affects those part-time people, and I understand with the extra benefit, but...
Well, study is not just for that part, you know, in general, with the salary scales and steps, and you wanna look at it in general, the system, I think, not just the part-time incentive.
So, you're talking about-
For all employees.
For everything.
Yeah, the study is for everything, exactly.
But we're gonna find out about that. Does it sound like that was the study that just for the part-time?
No, it's not just for the part-time.
Anything else, board members? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor of this, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye, am, because there's, there's no limits to this.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, the next item is the double share employee health insurance rate plan funding. We've got a little PowerPoint that Joe's gonna share with you, but just to make a couple of remarks prior to that, during the recent budget presentations, the administration provided the school board with estimated health insurance rates for the 2015, 2016 school year. The addition of the high deductible plan creates the need for the board's consideration of a different funding rate for our double share employees. The double share employees' plan is provided by the division when both spouses of a married couple work in positions that receive healthcare benefits from the school division. The past school board philosophy has been to provide 100% of the employees' premium rate for the MCPS core plan or the HMO plan, Health Keepers Plan. In the double share employee, each plan, each employee receives an employee-only contribution of $679.13 or a total of $1,352.26 towards the family plan. However, this amount exceeds the total cost of the high deductible healthcare family premium of $1,104.75. Mr. McElandro is gonna share the details of the rate structure and the administration's recommendation for adjusting the rate for double share employees who enroll in the high deductible plan. Joe?
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. I'm Mr. Lyons, members of the board. As Ms. Blackburn stated, previous presentations did not include the double share, and that's what we're gonna go over with you tonight. The high deductible health plan premium and the HSA structure is different than the tradit- traditional premiums that we've paid in the past. The school board payments to the plan will be different than the traditional plan. If you can recall from the budget meetings, is that there is a savings involved with that. But it's also important to note that the school board's philosophy of providing free employee-only coverage is still there, is still going to be true for this as well. Again, just to review, the school board pays 100% of employee-only for the core plan. That's our HMO plan. And typically with double share employees, what we do is we double what we pay for the core plan. So, what that looks like is this. If you take the employee for next year, the premiums will be this, is the first column there. The school board contribution to that would be $676.13, providing the employee with an employee-only HMO plan of $0. If we take that $676.13 and double it, you come up with the $1,352.26. You subtract the, the second column from the first, and you get the third column there. And those would be the rates for the employee-only. So, the double share employee-only, this is a monthly, for 12 months, for the HMO next year will be $338.08 for the HMO. For the PPO, it's a little bit more expensive, it's $481.12, again, using that philosophy of doubling the employee-only rate. As you recall, the, the premiums for the high deductible health plan are less than the premiums for the other plans, the HMO and the PPO. But also realize that this school board is paying $100 or $220 toward an HSA, that's the deductible, the high deductible, uh, plan. They put, put that into the HSA. Now, that's a monthly, but remember, the school board is going to do that biannually, okay, for the employee, so they'll put two deposits, but that's the monthly rate. So, for an employee-only, the school board is paying less per month. It's at $551.90. Again, applying the school board philosophy of having, providing zero cost to the employee, the monthly premium for the employee-only rate of the high deductible health plan is zero. Again, taking that premium or that amount and subtracting it from the premium cost and the HSA cost, you end up with that last column there of the cost for the employee. Doubling the employee-only share of the $551.90, you end up with $1,103.80. Notice the premium and the HSA cost is $1,104.75, leaving a balance for double share employees of 95 cents per month for a family. So, notice the asterisk there is that the school board would waive that dollar, essentially, for the employee-only double share. So, essentially, a family that has both spouses in a covered position with Montgomery County Schools will receive a family plan for free using this rate structure.
Do they just have one savings account with that in it, or do they have two different ones?
One, one savings account, yes, ma'am. And that, that savings account would have the $220 applied to it.
Okay. Sounds like a good deal to me.
Well, it was one of the little details that we missed as we were, you know, doing the comprehensive insurance presentation, but when you look at it now, it's, it's a great deal for those employees who actually have both spouses working for us. A free family plan is almost unheard of.
So, it's this fall when employees sign up for their new plans?
Yes, ma'am. We have 22 families or couples that work for us, who are 44 employees.
Oh, okay.
So, we will meet with those employees and, and make sure they understand fully before they get into the high deductible health plan, that there, there are still those risks involved in going into a high deductible health plan. But as you can see, it's quite beneficial for those employees, can be. Any questions?
So, what about a full-time employee and a part-time employee?
If they're both covered, if they're both receive health insurance through Montgomery County or eligible for that, they would, they would get this, they would be eligible. So, in other words, say you had a teacher, I think I, I understand your question. If I had a teacher and say, a teacher's assistant or an aide that works 30 hours or more, that would be newly eligible for the insurance, they would be, they would fall under this. Now, how many folks are under that? I, I don't know. I don't know how many we have in that category, though.
But it's, it's 22 couples or 44 who are both full-time?
Currently, yes, yes, sir.
That's a great deal.
Yeah.
So, we presented it for information tonight. If we have a regular meeting in July, we'll bring it back. If not, we'll bring it to the first meeting in August, and we'll still have time to implement.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item is our capital projects planning, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Staten and Dan Baranato if they would come to the podium. The presentation this evening will focus on reacquainting board members with your capital improvement plan document and reviewing highlights of the Christiansburg Strand Elementary Feasibility Study. Some people may ask why I am re-introducing this discussion now when we know that the county may be several years away from being able to borrow funds for additional capital improvements. I think the experience of 2010, 2011 provides the answer. As you know, the district went through a series of very unexpected events that created the opportunity ultimately to build and/or renovate three facilities. Two things that contributed greatly to the ability of the division to move forward quickly. They were, first, a well-thought-out capital plan that clearly denoted priorities as established by the school board, and, second, two of the three projects had significant planning work already completed and community, that involved community involvement, and were really ready to hit the ground running. So, I'm trying to assist the board in positioning the school division so that you will have a plan that you agreed to as being in the best interest of students, the community, and having completed significant planning towards that project when funding becomes available. So, Dr. Staten and Mr. Baranato will make the presentation, and again, it's just gonna set the stage.
Good evening, Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Lyons, and members of the board. Our presentation tonight provides a review of your priority capital improvement projects and the Christiansburg area feasibility study suggestions and considerations. Our intent is to keep the topic of our next CIP projects on the table and moving forward with appropriate progress. So, Dan Baranato will now come and will lead us through the information that we're gonna provide tonight.
Thank you, good evening. In this presentation, we will review and reaffirm your current CIP project priorities, and we will renew the discussion of your highest priority projects. The short-term goal is that in the next few months, we will address the considerations and the more feasible options suggested in the feasibility study. In the process, the administration will provide the appropriate information so that the board can make the decisions necessary to define the desired scope of the next projects for discussion with the Board of Supervisors. The long-term goal is, of course, to, to define and schedule projects that meet school board standards, are economically feasible, and can positively affect the most students possible. At the end of the presentation, we will, we will suggest some next steps. I know you've seen this before. It hasn't changed. Your CIP projects have traditionally been prioritized in three levels, critical, serious, and important, and for the past couple of years, the projects and the priorities have not changed, and the administration does not plan to recommend any substantial changes to the current projects or priorities. These are the critical priorities, and therefore, elementary and high school projects in the Christiansburg Strand. And the last one is for a steady yearly budget for capital maintenance projects at all of our schools. The serious priority projects are for some of our oldest school buildings and for projects that are indirectly, indirectly related to our critical projects. Here are the projects that the board has prioritized as important. Over the past 18 years, the school board and Board of Supervisors have steadily been able to develop and complete projects prioritized in the capital improvements plan. In that time period, we've built three elementary schools, three middle schools, and three high schools. Previous proactive planning and land acquisition have helped us achieve the successful project developments of the past 18 years. Planning thoughtfully for the future by identifying our desired end state and making sound fiscal decisions will help us achieve our future goals. Back, I think it was October 20th, J.D. Price was here. At the conclusion of the feasibility study presentation last October, Mr. Price of the architecture firm OWPR offered a list of questions for the school board to consider, we called it considerations, to aid in the decision process for defining the scope of the Christiansburg area elementary school project. Tonight, we'd like to quickly review these questions so we can begin to determine what information you require to help you answer the questions. The slide shows the abridged version of the questions, but as they appeared, the first one was, "To help overcrowding, will MCPS consider redistricting to reduce the quantity of students in the Christiansburg Strand by sending current Christiansburg Strand students to schools that currently have excess capacity elsewhere in Montgomery County, such as Price's Fork Elementary, Kip's Elementary, Eastern Montgomery Elementary?" Two, "Will MCPS change their planning standards to allow elementary schools with up to 900 students?" One of the options was, at the end of the day, three 900-student elementary schools. Another one was four 650 elementary schools. Right now, the planning standards are, for elementary schools, they should range between 207.30, and the preferred in your planning standards currently is between 350 and 600. The third question was, "Will MCPS pursue short-term solutions to overcrowding in the Christiansburg Strand that eliminate mobile units? If so, how long will the short-term solution be in place?" Some of the short-term solutions suggested were additions at all or some of the existing, existing elementary schools, using the existing old Christiansburg Middle School buildings as an elementary school, or short-term replacement structures for mobile units, such as new mobile units, or sprung structures, or mo- modular buildings. The fourth question, "If the existing old Christiansburg Middle School buildings will be used as elementary, as an elementary school, what level of renovations will occur in the occupied spaces into the site? Will the buildings be connected? Will the alternative education program occupy a building on the old Christiansburg Middle School campus?" To these questions, we would like to add, "Will MCPS change their planning standards to allow elementary schools to have classrooms that are 600 square feet instead of 900 to 1100 square feet?" Because we've noted in the study and in the field that the classrooms at Old Christiansburg Middle School, on average, are about 600 square feet per room. The board's standard for elementary classrooms, as designed and built at Price's Fork and Eastmont Elementary School, are 900 square feet and 1100 square feet. Five, "If the existing old Christiansburg Middle School buildings will not be used as an elementary school, how long will old CMS be in use? And what functions will be accommodated at Old Christiansburg Middle School?" Currently, it's basically used as, the gym is uses the auxiliary gym for Christiansburg High School, and the lower building is used for, for our alternative programs. Although the feasibility study considered numerous different options for elementary school projects, the more feasible options presented at the clu- conclusion of Mr. Price's presentation included large and small projects. This is the summary slide of the more feasible project options from Mr. Price's presentation. The large project options at the top left and top right of the slide included new buildings and renovations and additions to existing buildings in various phases. As you can see, the larger, more expensive projects were based around either a 650-student school or a 900-student elementary schools. The smaller cost options at the bottom of the slide were based on either utilizing Old Christiansburg Middle School as an elementary school, or building classroom and gymnasium additions to the current existing elementary schools. The next steps, to keep us moving, not too fast but not too slow, we suggest that the next step we can take to make progress towards a more defined plan is to schedule a discussion of the considerations questions during the second meeting in August. We could go through each question and seek consensus on an answer for each, or at least a consensus on which direction is more acceptable or less acceptable. After the considerations are answered, we can then have a session centered on the chart of options in light of the consensus achieved on the considerations. of options in light of the consensus achieved on the considerations. This discussion could be scheduled for later in the fall. A final step is to continue to update our enrollment projections. The feasibility study was based on enrollment projections that followed the general population projections for our county. Recent enrollment numbers, actual enrollment numbers at the individual schools are up and down. Updated projections will give us the best available enrollment estimates to use when it comes time to finalize the decision on the projects.
So tonight, we wanted to just get it back on everybody's radar with some big ideas and the considerations are very tough questions and they however, help narrow the funnel because we've got to find some ways to start deciding where to focus our efforts and what can the, what does the board think is in the best interest of the students and the community. And to do that, we have to have some parameters to start with and that considerations discussion appears to be the best place to start.
I have a question.
We're open for questions.
The considerations, when you, when the feasibility development options summary was done, it didn't take in all the considerations such as the short-term solutions. I'd like to know what the cost of that would be, number three. And number one, what would the cost of that be, the redistricting? And how would that be accomplished?
Right. The actual construction costs, if you look at the option summary page, the smaller project option, well, all of these, the larger ones and the smaller ones are cost estimated there. As far as like smaller project option number one, which was using basically old Christiansburg Middle School as an elementary school, this suggests maybe as a fourth and fifth grade school with substantial renovations, that was fourteen to fifteen million dollars. The other smaller project option of adding classroom additions, I think it was, six classrooms at each school plus a gym at each of the elementary schools except not, not another gym at Falling Branch, but at, six classrooms at each school, three gymnasiums, one at each of the three schools without one, would be thirteen to fourteen and a half million dollars.
So that's, you're-
So that, that was estimated there. We did not estimate the idea of redistricting, of course.
Okay, you're addressing the third-
Yeah, that's number three.
-consideration.
Yeah, yes.
But you still haven't addressed-
The considerations basically were the questions related to the different options that you had.
Okay, but there's nothing other that addresses the first consideration?
No, it would be basically a matter of doing a transportation cost analysis and looking at where the space is and where we would be moving children from and to.
Okay, so right now, before the information about this board meeting goes out and that was bought up, as far as redistricting and sending kids, because when we went there before and the county went ballistic before there was even any discussion as to what was going to happen, this would only be part of the discussion and quite frankly, it ain't going to happen. If it didn't happen in any other part of this county, it's not going to happen in Christiansburg.
And I think if that was the consensus and it was confirmed, you wouldn't have to-
Right.
Yeah, then we're working on more of that first, the option number one.
But we certainly have talked about it before.
And to piggyback that too, after Eastern Montgomery Elementary School was built, I raised some questions because a lot of people kind of said, "Well, you know, we did this and it was kind of wasteful and we did that and it was kind of wasteful." And I brought some issues and a board member frankly told me, Price's Fork, I mean, shoot-
Eastmont Elementary?
No, not Eastmont, but which school was right after that that we built? It was Price's Fork, okay, all right. Price's Fork will have everything that Eastern Montgomery got and it did. So why should Christiansburg be any less? They should get everything. They didn't have, no other school had to redistrict and we should have looked at that in the Blacksburg Strand and we did not. So why should Christiansburg even have to consider it? They shouldn't be less anything that any of the other schools got and that's just my opinion and this may not be the time and I know you're looking for direction, but-
I think the question really is centered around, if we were considering redistricting, it would cause us to decide between option one and option two. The only time we would really need to redistrict is if we were to select option two to create these nine-hundred, you know, capacity for nine-hundred, three, nine-hundred-three, three nine-hundred capacity elementary schools as opposed to four six-fifty, which we have four essentially, four elementary schools for the Christiansburg Strand, correct?
Yes.
So I think the redistricting part of that is, the question in that is, it helps us to choose option one or two essentially.
I get that, but when you throw in redistricting to Price's Fork and that sort of area, that's when that area gets really, really gray because you are going into a whole different school system then. It's not like just, okay, well, this street because of three schools is going to be going to this new school and that's not the way it was. That's my concern with even mentioning that.
Let me ask this again. Let me state this again. I would like to see the cost effectiveness of the redistricting in plan and consideration two and so on. I'd like to see that done.
And I don't need to see that.
I don't need to see that either and usually we do take a board vote on information like that.
Well, when we bring it back in August, that would be the point at which votes would be taken about, you know-
Which direction to go.
Which direction, which considerations, because it is a starting point. We just need to hear the answers, but I think it would be best to deal with the answers to each of the questions in a whole discussion about the considerations and move through the list, but certainly we hear the concern and we certainly felt the same pain when we went through the discussion before.
Yep. The other thing I would like to see, and I mean, obviously, it's one of our critical points on the first, or on the second slide, to have the options for the high school with this as well. I'd like to just see them side by side so I can see, okay, we're planning to do this at the elementary schools and this is a potential plan for the high school as well, because they're both at critical states. So, you know, the next time we do a presentation with this, just include the high school information as well, like you did on this slide, because I need to see both, because I know there's a plan for both.
I think we had a considerations and a suggested options slide at the end of that presentation as well and we can bring those forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to see both of those together, so.
So basically, short-term solution that we are looking at the smaller project option number one and smaller project option number two. Those are the one corresponding to short-term solutions, all right?
That was suggested as the more feasible ideas for a short term.
I just read the last line for the smaller project option number one, whatever capacity we create is good through 2019. By the time we act on this, it will be 2019. So I think that, that is not a very viable option-
Right.
Yeah.
As of now.
Right, and again, that was with the enrollment estimates as projected the county growing and our county, to me, it's very interesting where we get growth and where things go. People, we have a lot of people that attend, live in one area and attend in another area and vice versa and things change, change that.
Dan, what was the inflationary per-year cost adjustment? Because the dollar numbers are, he said you had to add X percent each year.
I believe he used two or three percent.
Each year.
Okay.
So that's another number to keep in mind.
And this is already, what, eight months old, nine months old?
Yes, it is.
A good refresh regardless.
Yes. Any other questions, board members?
You do have the big binders.
Yes, we do.
And some of you were holding your big bonders, so if you would like to have your big binder prior to our August discussions, you just need to ask Brenda, that Brenda.
Did Marty get one? I forget if she, she-
I'm sorry?
She got one.
I think we have Mr. Jones's.
Using it as a doorstop or someone, I think.
So thank you, Dan, thank you, John, for bringing us, like I said, it's just a start of a discussion designed to, you know, get everybody thinking about it again. And that finishes me up and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lyons, with the superintendent's search.
All right, board members, we've obviously come to a conclusion or come to a place where we're, have some suggestions of things that are going to happen with the superintendent search process, including the, where we are with the RFP. We do have two firms scheduled to be here July seventh to do presentations. I don't know at this point if there's any further discussion that we need to have. Sarah and I are planning to do some calls for references on those two firms and we hope to have those back to you and report back to you before our July seventh meeting. So anyone have any questions or concerns about any of that?
So it's a regular scheduled seven o'clock meeting?
Well, that's the other thing we need to decide. Is that going to be a regular meeting or are we just going to have them do presentations?
Your next agenda item is the July meeting dates and it basically says that I don't have to have a meeting that evening. I can take care of the business that we need to take care of either at the second meeting in July or most likely the first meeting in August.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be that perhaps you make it a single item agenda.
Just make it a single item agenda. I'm fine with that. Any other input on that?
Sounds good.
Board members?
Can we do it at six o'clock?
Do it at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Can we make that adjustment? I know those firms have been called, but can we make that adjustment? I'm fine with six o'clock.
Six? So, so was there a time set already with them?
Well, we had, we just referred to the time before, but I mean, they're going to be coming regardless, so I think we've allotted up to an hour for each of those, so we're looking at a potential six, six PM to eight PM meeting. So, and then moving on to the other July meeting date, you know, at that point, after July seventh, if we rescore the RFPs at that point, we have a regular, our scheduled meeting would be for the eighteenth, correct? No.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry. Twenty-first. My thought is we probably don't need to wait that long to make a decision once we hear what they have to say on the seventh. So do we want to go ahead and reschedule that meeting or do we want to wait till the seventh and then decide when to have a meeting?
Let's go ahead and reschedule it to, what about like July ninth, that Thursday?
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes.
They're going to be here, we're going to hear from them on the seventh. Can we not make a decision that night?
No.
Can we score-
We may go into closed session after the meeting.
Go into closed session and-
So it would become a dual, it would be a two agenda item meeting.
Okay.
It's no problem.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
Everyone else fine with that? Just knock it all out in one night?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. So tentatively, we will unschedule our twenty-first meeting and we'll do everything on the seventh. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'm good with that?
So we have an agenda for the seventh meeting and we have canceled the July twenty-first meeting.
For right now, yes.
And that's a day that even if we do have something, I'll be out of town, so.
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
I'll be out of town too.
Well, good. That is just fantastic.
Man, we've got a whole bunch of days in between that. We can get one.
Yeah, we need to, yeah. If we need to, I mean, I'm hoping, obviously, we, well, here's the thing, we make a decision on the seventh, we're going to have to start meeting with these folks to move forward. So out of that, yeah, so we're going to have to start scheduling things out of that, so. But again, part of that will be, the RFP process will have to finish, we discussed that already, so we will have to hold those meetings to be tentative once we make the decision on the seventh. Okay? That said, any board member have any unfinished business that they would like to bring to the table? Hearing none, I will move on to new business. Any board member have any new business that they would like to share with the board? Hearing none? Announcements and information? Anything that you would like to share with us?
I have a few things to share. One of them, I attended Southwest Virginia Governor's School Board meeting recently and this coming fall, they have nineteen fewer students and that is resulting in quite a less revenue for them, so they are encouraging the students and participating counties to, you know, mention that, so I guess to, you know, kind of encourage the participation per se.
Was it certain counties that it was lessened or?
Some went down and some went up, you know, it's just a, you know, balance. Some counties that said they would participate more than the previous year won't be able to do. Some is interest issues, some, you know, financial issues for the counties, but they are still doing the extended day. They did it with, with county this year, the school year, and still the with county will be continuing because none of the other counties can commit at this time for extended day. And one of our students, Christiansburg High School student Kendra Hale's papers on microbiology and cell biology accepted for Virginia Junior Academy of Science and she presented that along with ten others Governor's School students at JMU end of May, so that was really exciting. And I visited CMS I Dream Summer Program and it was very impressive to see the participation and excitement and all the critical thinking going on, so thanks to Diane Half and all the helpers to make it happen. It was very exciting. I wish I stayed and played with them. And the other thing, congratulations to Blacksburg High School tennis and girls soccer teams for their state titles.
I wanted to mention the soccer team also, but beside that, we have a Christiansburg High School graduate now attends Virginia Tech and he has become, Devin Carter, he's become an academic All-American, which is an incredible feat. He, he's staying out of Virginia Tech. He received a scholarship, academic scholarship to continue his studies for his PhD, which I think is, he's one of our youngsters and I think he's a tribute to our school system.
Fantastic. Any other announcements or information, board members? Okay, you can see our agenda preparation, our meetings that are coming up, the one that we just unscheduled and all of those things, just keep in mind, our next meeting with the, joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors will be at the end of August. The one that we would have done at the end of this month has been, oh, yeah, at the end of this month has been canceled. All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? You're adjourned.